I just forgot to, I turned on the, uh...
Oh.
Nobody could see. They were seeing the loop.
Oh, no problem. Yeah, anyway, um, so this, this topic is really about, we, we had addressed this earlier because of the, and what tickled it was the, you know, uh, interest in expanding the solar farm up at Sagamore Farm. Good topic. Um, but that started raising some, I heard, we all heard, I think, some questions about did we, do we evaluate this? Do we look at that? Do we look at this? Because this is a very broad topic. Unfortunately, it's almost too broad sometimes. But I, I think that recognizing there is a need to, um, keep moving on this direction that we started with a small farm some, what, a year and a half ago, I think it was, uh, up there for a solar array, that we continue to proceed towards being more environmentally friendly, green and all those kind of topics. So we, we get drafted, this preliminary draft, we did put in the select board packet some weeks ago, actually, maybe a month ago about, it was just a, just a, you know, examples of some of the questions that we had heard along the way. And the intent of it, workshop today, we discuss whether or not these are, well, we're doing the right thing and approach. But more importantly, um, these overall things often fall under, like Jeremy and, and, and economic development or whatever you want to call it, of planning. Uh, we need to make sure we have, one, designated, in my opinion, the correct person, it's the go-to person and the focal point for all the information that is being gathered by whomever. And two, that we have covered the gamut of what the select board continues, considers to be the important items that we want to look at. And eventually, if we go this route, if we all agree, that we should look at on each of these items, what is the entity or person or whomever who is leading the generation of information in that area? And that, that's extremely important. By the way, it doesn't have to be a committee, but it oftentimes is, or a commission. It could be an individual who we think has expertise, or, or there's always the possibility of getting professional advice in some of those, some of these areas, that may be appropriate also. So, but that backdrop, that's why we're here to, I believe, to, we scheduled this workshop to look at this draft and see if it makes sense. If, if it's complete, if it's incomplete, if it's a waste of energy or whatever. And we're open to this discussion. That's what this workshop is about. So with that, um, any comments on what I just said? Anybody want to elaborate, disagree?
Audra, did you put this document together?
No, this is Allison.
It was a collection. It was a collection. I was involved in it too. I was involved in it too. Well, it came out of discussions, of just discussions about, well, did we look at?
Summarizing what we've talked about, basically.
Much of this information may already be available. We, we don't know that. Because I, I did have a conversation with some members of the Energy Committee. They suggested some of this information has been looked at. Great. If it's already there, great. We can bring it to the table so that the, so that the select work can understand that this information is there. And, 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 and look at the, at the content. If not, then we need to figure out a way to get the information if we agree it's information we want to, uh, the select board is interested in investigating. Because remember, our responsibility is not just to, just to, this is not about one property, by the way. This is about what, what is best for the town of Camden collectively. And that doesn't always jive with an, an individuals or even a committee's focus. It may be broader than that. We see a broader picture than any committee does, or any commission, or any individual or individuals in the town. It brings that conundrum when people come to us really excited about an issue, and it could very well be real. But is it, from our perspective, is it real? What, how, how dense is it? How, how big is it in comparison to the other issues that we face with regard to the town? Not, not just financially. And that's, you know, enough lecturing. I just wanted to open up to, I think, I see more of these workshops, more of these, bringing initiatives, I call them, to the table to discuss, are we doing it right? Are we delegating the responsibility correctly? So we know what the expectation is from, well, Jeremy or Taylor or committee or whoever it might be. Um, that's, I think that's the only way we can get, in my opinion, get a little bit more, a little more efficient than just doing what we've done today. So that generated these, what, how many bullets are on here? Eight, eight bullets of, and they may be complete. They may be, cross them off the list. I don't care. But I would like to make sure that in this work-
I have one of the pictures on there.
Is it? What picture?
It's very nice.
Audra answered my question.
Oh.
Turning over the paper.
We're not specifically focused on Sagamore necessarily this morning, but-
Yeah, I mean, remember, this whole initiative, this whole discussion started, it focused on, because there's some good discussions about Sagamore.
On solar.
And solar. And increasing the array up there to, you know, get us more renewable energy and get us more effective and green.
Right.
Than we currently are. Yes, it was definitely involved there. But, and it, that raised, I think, the issue to a more conscious level.
I mean, for me, just to put it very clearly, it, there are some, you know, I have some reservations about moving forward with solar, expanding solar array at Sagamore. I don't want it to drag on for ever and ever. And we should, um, in a lot of ways, it does seem to make sense to expand the solar farm there. But I, several of us, it appears, do have some reservations, you know, including some staff people. So I think we owe it to everybody to clearly define what those reservations are and how they can be, um, you know, what, what we need answered in order to feel good about moving forward with Sagamore. Um, I think we've been very quick or slow in the past about the issue, you know, we have all these issues that lots of us care about, but it's been the common practice just to kind of outsource these things to the committees that it makes, where it makes the most sense. Um, and sometimes that is the best way of moving things forward quickly and getting the best answers. But there are other times when I think, you know, us, especially now, like us as a group, we are, you know, pretty forward-thinking and interested in getting things done. And sometimes it can be the select board that figures it out. You know, we've had a lot of, like, with properties like, you know, the Tannery and Sagamore, and we have had tons of community input. We've had, you know, we have reports from the watershed school with all of these suggestions. We have reports from here and there and Tannery and all this. But it's almost like we haven't, as a select board, we haven't, we're the ones that ultimately have to put things out to voters. And so we need to be the ones, I think, near the end, you know, after the community input phase, the, the biggest part of it has been, not to say completed, but in some ways, we've done all that. Now we need to get together as a group and figure out how, how we can move forward. We've been talking about Sagamore for 20 years or whatever. And I think this probably is the group to actually get something done. And, but if we continue to not take ownership of some of these ideas, um, then it's just going to be batting around between different committees with different interests forever and ever. And, um-
Yeah, and I think I underscore, just underscore what I said earlier. It's very difficult, you know, we've all been on talk with committees, liaisons, or on committees. It's very difficult to get a broad picture of what's going on in the town, you know, when you're a committee. It has a relatively narrow focus, as it should. But of course, committees should serve, and they do serve, at the behest of the select board of the town. It doesn't have to be just a select board, but the town. And that can get, get lost in the translation very easily. And I do get concerned sometimes that, sometimes our committees and commissions are working on stuff that they believe in their minds is imperative to the town and the town needs it, but we're not connected. We just haven't had, and not that we shouldn't be, or they shouldn't be, but we have to have a communication. This is part of that. But this is a little broader, because this, this topic today is a little broader than any individual committee or anything like that. But it's an approach to looking at things a little differently and more, a little more proactively, I think, in terms of what, to try to stunt, stunt, I think there is a difference in a little bit of how we approach things in the select board, at least. I know I do. I, I do like information. I don't want to make, I don't want to be sitting on that chair up here and getting a, you know, an issue brought to the table cold and I got to make a split-second decision whether it's good or bad. That's, sometimes it's like flipping a coin. And that's not fair. So what I will do is, my, my philosophy is I will ask questions. And in questions, I will do research and get information. And from information, or knowledge, and from knowledge, I can make reasonably intelligent decisions for the town. It takes a little more time sometimes in middleland. It can, some, some people be irritating, but I, I think that process is important. And that's what started this whole draft here. It was not, we're not trying to stop anything. We're not trying to, you know, that may, we're not trying to slow anything down. But I think, yeah, I agree. I totally agree. Sagamore in particular is an example. It's not the only property in town. It happens to be the biggest one that's available of doing anything with. It, it has a, it, it has, it has been stagnant for too many years. It needs to be focused on now and, and try to find out what is collectively the best use of that land or portions of that land for the town of Camden in general. Um, in parallel, we've got these other initiatives that are very important with renewable energy and this kind of thing. We don't want those to be stalled while we're involved in this other activity with Sagamore, Tannery, wherever else. And that was what this was all about.
Yeah, um, I think for me, Allison kind of hit the nail on the head, at least in her sentiment from, from my perspective, when it comes to Sagamore. I think that, um, you know, I've heard of several different ideas for what we can do up there. I don't know that any of them are really fleshed out to the point where we could say, this is, this seems like a great one that we want to take to people and, and get behind until it gets, has more time put into it. So I guess in that sense, I feel like Sagamore in particular is a really valuable resource for us. And I don't know when we're going to come across another plot of land like that, that we're going to have literally any option to be able to do with, whether it's solar or affordable housing or, or something different. So I don't want to rush into making a decision on how to use the property or a portion of the property. Um, but I definitely agree that I feel like being proactive and taking ownership over it and making something happen. And this is, feels like the right time to do that, um, with, you know, proper due diligence from our behalf.
All right. Mark, do you have anything you want to say?
I've got lots to say. Um, first off, um, and, and we've covered this when we made the decision in the meetings. Um, I think that we do have the responsibility for making final decisions. We've been voted in. That's, that's our job. But it doesn't mean that we are going to be the expert in all the things that people are considering. Um, I really think there should be people here, you know, from some of the committees that have a stake in talking about these things. So we can hear, because a lot of them have become more expert in what they do than we do. And I don't think having an 8:30 Monday morning meeting is conducive to having other people be able to attend. I think it's, you know, I've heard complaints that, you know, it's, it's a working time. It's for people. And these kind of meetings, when people should have input, should be at a time when most people can attend. I think they should be in the evening when people can attend. So that said, I know we've talked about that before. And because we can just discuss this among ourselves, but we should have other people here. As regards Sagamore, um, I think I have a different perspective than, than people, mainly because I've been doing a lot of research lately. I have a, a job that I do research on, a special research project every Friday. And I've been studying, um, energy and global warming issues and stuff for quite a couple of months now. And in Europe, there's huge, um, angst going on, especially among students. There are 100,000-plus students every Friday on strike every year because of the, the global warming situation. There will be a March 15th, uh, nationwide student strike. Um, and it would happen some in this country as well, because the, the science reports, and of course, there's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of controversy about what's real, what's not. And, and nobody, nobody knows the final answer. But there is a consensus that, um, we have 12 years, and now it's down to about 11, to really make some serious changes on, um, what we're doing as a planet in terms of, uh, global warming, uh, before we get to a point where we're going to have problems that cannot be reversed. That's the scientific consensus right now of, of the people that I read. And one of the things, Allison just had something on Facebook about the paper bag, uh, the plastic bags, about, it was a really good, uh, small thing to do, but it's really a small thing in terms of the big thing. Um, the reason I am a proponent of finishing the solar field in, at Sagamore, and one of the things I wish had happened, Jeremy and I have talked about going out and hiking it, to sort of look at the land and, and look at, you know, how important that field is to some of the other things that we do. Um, one of the reasons proponent for finishing just those, it's two, two additional acres, I believe, which would cover then 40% of the town's energy usage, is it's something that's been wired. It's something that's been prepared. And it can be done quickly and, and, and efficiently. And we don't have that anywhere else. We're looking, the Energy Committee is looking into the landfill, the eight acres, to see if there's, that's something that can be done. Um, I talked to Brian Robinson about the report that, looking again at the, the roofs in town. And he felt that the, uh, report that, um, Will Gartley did was accurate in terms of not being able to efficiently use the town buildings. Um, so I was, you know, I wish we could do more stuff like that. But in terms of the global thing, we're part of the global government of mayors, uh, finishing that solar thing is something we can do now. And looking at the big picture worldwide, um, I think it's important. And I'm pretty much a proponent of it. You know, if there's something else we can do quickly and, and efficiently, that's great. But this is something we can do now that doesn't take, it takes two more acres out of 71 acres. And I think it's important. So I just wanted to make-
Thanks.
-myself clear on that issue.
Thank you, Mark. Um, with all that said, I might suggest we start discussing this list from the perspective of whether or not these are, oh, I'm sorry, guys. See your hands. Go ahead, Taylor.
My question. So if we lost the two acres, we didn't lose it, if we used the two acres for expanding the solar farm and leaves with 69, is the 69 acres that would be left, is that all developable?
No, no.
No. And I, I mean, I appreciate what Mark is saying about the two acres. The one thing that we really need to assess is access to-
Right.
-and out of that site.
Yeah.
And I've looked at it preliminarily. Um, I will say, in talking, I've talked to an engineer that looked at it. He's indicated Sagamore Farm Road's challenging, um, to use, um, for access to the site. If, if Sagamore Farm Road was usable, then we can actually put a road up in there. Um, and then that would be our way to, you know, ingress and egress out of that site. Then I could say, I would say, then the two acres that sits over by the, the existing panels is, you know, I think, then you should ought to look at it. Because you're right. I mean, it's, it's right there. It's wired for it and it's easy. But-
Yes, Mark.
-my fear is, is that, because I think the plan has always been to come up, if there's access to that site, is to come up through Chip Laite's property, if we can make that work too. Uh, because I know we've got an easement for maintenance of the farm. But besides that, I mean, it's going to take a lot more to get access, a road up into there. Um, and that would be the prime location for that road, would be on that left side of the solar farm coming up in, um, the existing solar farm. So I think if you-
So if expanded, if we expanded, then that wouldn't be possible?
I mean, I've looked at that area and it's, and I forget, it's about three acres, I think, that I calculated the area of the open field there. And, and if you come up in, it'd be, I think it'd be challenging.
I think it could be adjusted so you could have the access through the road. But would that mean still, we would have to make a deal with Chip, which would probably involve purchase.
Well, I don't want you just solving a problem, but-
Yeah, no, I mean, just the, the big picture that I wanted, the reason I brought that up is I just, even if it's a ballpark, 69 acres sounds like a big number and we have lots to use. But realistically, that's not all developable. So like, how much of that could we actually use for, you know, many purposes?
Well, that's a wide open, that's a wide open question. And we haven't gone down that road. I mean, I was reading something actually this weekend, the history on Sagamore Farm and plans to develop it. And there was a time when, um, we were looking at spending, I don't remember, upwards of $30,000 to do a feasibility study to assess what our options are up there. I mean, you do have wetlands. You do have vernal pools. You've got all that stuff up in there. And so Sagamore Farm Road that comes up there, there's a pretty good-sized wetland up there on the top of it. Um, so you'd have to do what you can to avoid those things permitting-wise.
Right.
And we haven't gone down that road to assess it. So I think if-
We just don't have a answer yet.
We're just not there yet to make a decision.
I think it's 77 acres, isn't it?
I think 77.
Just FYI.
I guess one thing to consider is I think that, you know, this conversation has been laser-focused on Sagamore Farm. And one of the reasons why I really like this is because it kind of opens it up. And I think that by just focusing on Sagamore Farm, the town might be missing an opportunity to do something that has a much broader impact and actually makes much more of a difference. You know, I, everybody wants, I, I understand this wanting to physically see, you know, renewable power generation facilities in your town. But I think by just looking at that and not sort of expanding what we might be able to do, we're missing out on much bigger opportunities that we could have with, you know, other municipalities that we could partner with to do a project, or, you know, some of these cooperative purchasing activities where you get businesses and you get, um, you know, residences involved in solving this problem. And I think that's going to have a much bigger impact than if we just keep focusing on what property we, what properties do we own and where can we put solar panels. I think that's, we're missing out on a much bigger opportunity for our community.
I think that's exactly right. I mean, I think of even like the Garden Institute property that's up on, off of Mechanic Street, tucked in back there. It's a fairly large piece of property. That, to me, even the snowball, we haven't, I don't know if anyone's assessed the snowball yet.
Midco solid waste.
Midco solid waste. And then just taking it even a step further, I was listening to a program the other day, and they were talking about energy and, and alternatives and renewables. And I think it's important to really understand what our, you know, what, what is the energy that we consume? How do we use it? So, um, you know, refrigeration, things like that, building systems, I think it'd be, a lot of communities go down the road of doing energy audits, like through Honeywell or, or Siemens. They come in and they assess all of your facilities to see really where your energy use is. And that may be some, that's, I know that we're, it's getting off topic a little bit, but we, it's important to, I think, talk about, because we may be missing some easy things that we could really reduce our, you know, energy consumption. And I'm just throwing that out there.
With 30 years of experience in doing exactly that, I can guarantee you that exists here. And how much, I couldn't tell you. It was a 10%, 5%, I don't know.
Yeah. And can we do something for, like, all of the town? Can we help facilitate this for all of the industry businesses in town?
Absolutely. I think that's where, where, I think, you referred to it as energy conservation opportunities. It's a global topic. And the Siemens and the Honeywells of the world have made a career of this. Um, they spend, I can name huge facilities. Harvard University is a classic example. Siemens' biggest client. They have full-time staff there and constantly reviewing energy conservation opportunities in buildings and operations and how they handle things. And they constantly are finding those, even in new buildings. So in towns as old as some of the buildings are here in Camden Hall, I look around and I see dozens, dozens, dozens. But to your point, but Allison, we skipped you.
Oh, I don't know if I skipped or not. So, I mean, I definitely agree with all, I wrote a lot of this. So I agree with the broader perspective and looking, I, you know, I want to buy brownfield sites in other towns and all, all of those things. And I think we should do that. But I do, I don't think we should overlook the amount of energy that has been put into all of this. I mean, to sit, the, the Energy Committee has, and has done a lot of work. There's, um, it just took me forever to find it. But looking at the, like, the first report that the watershed school did was, in my opinion, the one that we should be actually going back to, um, the most. Because it looked at, you know, there are little problems here and there with any of the studies. But the overall analysis that they did of just where, you know, a broad overview of where is the energy consumption for the town, not looking at people in the town, but just our own town things. And then, um, what do they see as the broad opportunities for reduction? That, and then they did, you know, the Energy Committee followed that up with an analysis of all of these town-owned properties. And so there is a lot that has been done, even-
What was the date of that workshop?
I actually just, I think I sent it to you. It's-
2016.
16. It was before I was on the board, maybe 15 or 16.
I think it was 15.
It was back when, and it was a great thing, that was back when, um, revision came in and gave the presentation right after them. And that's when they were focused on the-
I would think 15 was the year.
On the Public Works Building. And, um, it's-
That's right, it was Public Works Building.
So the, they have gone down and seen where, I mean, and really, if we're in a hu- huge hurry to try to reduce our carbon footprint, and we're that willing to, you know, join the movement of protesters and whatever, we should be seriously considering shutting down the snowball. I mean, if we really, and this is part of the, also all of the vehicles and the school buses and the police cars. And so this is why I fuss about those kinds of things. And then I feel like I don't get very much support. But there, you know, a windmill, two windmills, that would do everything. Um, but, so I, I think we should continue, like, look broadly, but then not say that the, the very best solution has to be the enemy of doing something right now. So if, if after all of this analysis and after all, we're still going to find out that it doesn't make, you know, I had a good conversation with Pete the other day, um, that, you know, and he said, he's all for all of this urban density stuff that I want to do and affordable housing and how that does reduce our carbon footprint too. Because better to have solar panels far, a little farther away, and then people can live close to town and walk. And, um, I think, you know, even the Energy Committee is all on board with that kind of stuff. But if we're not going to actually do it, um, which has been the, the track record, um, then why not do something? So sort of what we had, we arrived at was, let's answer this question once and for all, at least of access to Sagamore. And if it seems likely under any scenario that housing can go in that, that field area, um, housing or, you know, I, I want something like, if you look on the back of that page, that like solar village kind of stuff.
Right.
Um, if we can't get anybody to say, yeah, it would make sense to put a road in through here and put houses there, then, then why not just go ahead and say yes? Okay, there is a 5% reduction in the tax credit that's going to happen in April. That is something. If the result of all of this is not going to be that we're going to do something right in that area, then let's just let it go forward and, you know, do something now. And then spend, so I think we should try to do two things with this workshop, is figure out a vision for how we can really do the best thing, but also see if there's a way that we can just settle this, you know, one and three-quarter acre of additional solar panels question. You know, not, treat those two things a little tiny bit separately, just so that we don't have to continue to talk about the same thing over and over again.
Um, yeah, one of the things I, I want to make clear is, I agree, this is not an either-or situation. This is an and, and, and. I mean, all the suggestions here are terrific. And I know the Energy Committee is totally on board with doing all of these things, not just, just one thing. Um, I, I think that's- just, just one thing. Um, I, I think that's, that's real important. And, you know, one of the great, you know, places that we use energy is this building. This building, and when I was on the Energy Committee before I joined the Select Board, um, you know, we walked through this building from basement to roof and stuff like that. There's a ton of things we can do here, you know, but it takes money. Um, one of the other things that, in terms of getting people involved, I talked to Audra about this, we have the, um, one of the areas that uses more energy from one of the studies than anything else is the older houses in town. Let me finish. Um, and one of the things we talked about is using one of the, we have the special accounts that can only be used for certain things. And maybe instead of buying, helping to buy oil or something, putting just window coatings, plastic window coatings, and a lot of the, helping some of the, the people put that in.
It's plastic.
You know, there's lots of things we can do that we have the money and the availability to do right now.
Sure.
And we should look at that as well.
You're absolutely right, Mark. That's why I consider our energy conservation opportunities. You know, there's, it's, it's, this is a multi-edged sword. We have to start someplace. And I think the, the starting point, I'd agree, is to put some flesh on the bone of some of this stuff as rapidly as possible so we can do, accomplish all of the above. Because very classically, yeah, I, I look at a lot of reports and I think nothing's been done after those reports were issued. So I'm not criticizing any entity or anybody. I'm just saying, this, that's not acceptable to me. And I don't think it's acceptable to any of you either. Uh, I think we need to, we need, we need to reduce our carbon footprint by reducing energy. And at the same time, in parallel with that, figure out how we increase solar, wind, whatever it might be. But it has to move quickly. And by the way, I think a lot of this stuff is available. I agree with you. I think the Energy Committee and company did a lot of work. I've asked to see that, I still want to see that. This will help us to, you know, get that out, out to us to take a look at. So I think with that, I agree. This is a multifaceted beast, but we're, I think we're all on the same page for objectives here. It's just a question of how to do it. I think jumping to any decision on any specific item right now, based on some perceived or actual, um, a trigger, is always a mistake. You just don't do that. Just FYI, just so you all know, I mean, Anita did show me the reports from the, what we call the Mark de Mayors thing that they did for two thousand sixteen, uh, fifteen. The town generate, um, uses about two million kilowatt hours per year total, 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 for the whole town. Um, but half of that is the snowbowl, to your point. One million kilowatt hours per year is about for the snowbowl.
The school buses give the snowball a run for-
Residential as well, or just municipal?
No, no, no. And that's not even schools.
No, no, that's just, that's just municipal, yeah. That's the only thing we have meter stuff on. We don't have the much energy I used in my home.
Right.
It's a matter of, it'll be difficult to get all of that. But, you know, it's available. But, but yeah, this is municipal. And it's, it's large. It's very, very large. And, you know, we can debate about how green we are, not green, you know, that's, I don't want to get into those debates. I think it's a waste of time. I think it'd be most productive of us to go through this list and discuss whether or not, and if it exists, great, we'll get it from some entity, committee or whatever, and look at it. But I think there's, there's some compelling questions that we can't quite answer effectively right now about what might be best in, in parallel with that, what might be best for Sagamore. And I agree with the critics who have said to me, yeah, well, you've talked about Sagamore for twenty years and haven't done a damn thing. You know what? They're right. Now, I think that's, that's got to stop here now with this meeting.
We haven't talked about Sagamore for twenty years.
Well, I don't think any, but-
People have.
Well, people have, but it, it hasn't gone anywhere. There hasn't been a proposal specifically other than a solar farm. And, and I guess some trails that we have put up there for people to use. Um, other than that, develop, not only use the word development, that scares people, but utilization of affordable housing or solar or a combination has not been, in my opinion, effectively discussed and implemented. That's what we're trying to do here, I think. And in parallel, um, there are, from my experience, a number of ways of approaching some of these things, um, which some of them listed here, like the first one in the parking lot thing. They have, does it work here? I don't know. I really don't. But I think we should at least go through the list and determine, is it, is cross something off, add something to it? Um, and, and, and remember, this is for questions the Select Board is asking. If the answers are there, honestly, in my opinion, if somebody's sitting here saying, yeah, the answer's, to your point, Mark, about meeting at five o'clock, and now you know, the answer's available, that's still going to happen. That's still going to happen. Um, but I think this is really, because we got a lot of questions from the Select Board members about what we're doing, what we're not doing, what we have done. There's a lot of information out there.
We also have no written, you know, months ago, we asked Anita-
For a plan?
For a plan, for something written that says, this is what we want to do to expand in, at Sagamore. You know, these are the numbers, this is how it would be financed or not financed or whatever. And there's, I'm dumbfounded as to why we haven't received anything in writing that explains. So there's actually no proposal on the table, but then the idea is that we're somehow not approving something, which we just don't even have anything. I, I-
There's some pieces in Anita's defense, she's been dealing with the-
Understand.
Family situation.
She's understanding.
Oh, yeah, no, not, I didn't mean Anita. But, but Pete seems to have-
Yeah. So, and Pete's been working on some of it.
Something written.
Understand.
We can't approve something that we don't even have in front of us.
That's correct. Well, and-
Very hard to judge it against other options when we don't-
True, true, true.
One thing I do know is, regarding landfill, Pete was going to, he was going to examine the, the eight acres of landfill. And I don't know the latest on that. Have you heard anything, Audra, from that?
No, yeah.
But asked, we've been, I've asked him to explore that, and he's taken on that responsibility.
If you're a little careful-
Hopefully that's in, in process to look at the, the midco solid waste owned land, which, eight acres of which is in Camden, that, that may be, um, since, things since the last time they looked at it, when it was not suitable, I, I believe, uh, maybe there's a change in technology or something, or the land itself, so that-
Well, so they've looked at the land, midco solid waste didn't even realize that they owned some of this land for a while. So it, it's not the landfill itself, because that is, well, hopefully something will evolve that can, but it's set, it's, it's, isn't that final grade or anything. But there's buffer land-
Right.
Um, that I don't believe has ever been evaluated.
Pete's-
Right. And I talked, I, you know, I talked to him about that.
We'll hopefully get an answer there, which would be a good thing.
Well, sometimes also, we need to bring in, I think, another company too, because-
Absolutely.
We do a lot of talking about, you know, fairness and putting things out to bed. And, and I think we've forgotten that there are other companies other than Revision that, um-
I agree.
You know, might even be more interested. Revision, I think, is a little bit swamped sometimes with, with work too. And there are other companies out there that are doing things that are a little bit more.
I agree. I agree. Um, we can discuss each, each one of these. Does anybody feel we should start with anyone in particular? It takes precedence over the others, because in my mind, they do. Um, but I don't want to dictate how we discuss these, these, these eight items on here. Or importantly, we're missing some.
I think we've covered the landfill. It's being examined. We'll, we'll get some answers back on that.
So you're talking about midco solid waste, two items? And the, and the action there is for the Energy Committee to look at that?
Uh, the Energy Committee is, is going out there. I think with Revision right now, and if we need them to have maybe Sun Dog come in as well.
So with the landfill though, so one, one thing, I didn't hear Pete say that he was going to look at, or stay on top of what the evolving technologies are with landfill cover systems that allow for solar. Um, I just heard him say that-
Yeah, you're right. They're, they're looking at the eight acres. That was the priority.
And then also the roofs there. Um, we've put the, the reason for not, there, I mean, there is so much sunny land over there. Um, and before, I think the recycling building was evaluated, but, and, and found to be a great candidate. But then it was said, oh, we're contemplating a redesign of the whole facility, so let's not do anything. Um, but uh, that, thank goodness, is on hold a little bit. Definitely on hold. So, but we do need to, with midco solid waste, we need to be a little bit sensitive to the fact that that is not in control of the Camden Select Board. We can certainly bring proposals to midco solid waste. And that shouldn't, that's not a reason for not moving forward over there, but just to be sensitive in the way we talk about that.
Right. And this is one of the ones where we might want to look at beyond just Revision Energy too, by the way. We shouldn't be using one contractor for all this information, because this-
Doesn't, he, he's just, he's using them to, he has relation, using them to sort of look at the land. And then we can, it's certainly up to us to make a decision on who to get proposals, put out our-
It's fine.
Understand that, Mark. That's, that's fine. That one, some of the ones in this list are a little bit longer lead items than others. An example, now, I think we should discuss those. The next one on the list is the possibility of investing in a solar farm outside of the town of Camden. That's a real estate driven issue. The, the solar farm doesn't have to be in the town of Camden. It could be any place, as long as you're dumping this, uh, chunk of energy into the grid, it, it's the same effect environmentally as it would be if you do it in my backyard. It makes no difference. This one though, this one, I bring it up because this is not a small effort. It takes a little bit of, oof, how should I put this? Um, professional evaluation. This is, this is a difficult one. It, it's time consuming. It's, it's a-
Which one are we on? Outside of Camden?
Yeah, yeah, outside of Camden.
Think that was especially time consuming as compared-
Well, let me put it this way.
I guess it also depends, because I think there are a few other communities that are already kind of looking at this sort of thing. So, I mean, it depends on how far down the road they are, and if we can just sort of jump in with them as an investor, you know?
Would permitting be a much more difficult issue for something like that, as opposed to, would permitting be a difficult issue for something like that, as opposed to doing it within our own town, where we have more control over that?
I don't think the permitting would be the issue, you know, because anything they're going to be looking at, they should hopefully be looking at land use that's available. You know, for example, on Route ninety or wherever, I'm picking a spot, I don't know. But there could be a chunk of land where the owner says, yeah, you, you can, I'll donate the land to, you know, build this six acres of solar, whatever the heck, or, or wind, or whatever they would provide to do. But, you know, my, my point is, the investigation of something like this is not a simple task. It's time consuming.
Right.
You gotta make lots of phone calls, lots of connections. And this might be one where, in my opinion, professional services might be the way to go with trying to figure out how, you know, I'm not, love spending money, but let's do it right. Um, I think it's unfair to put that on any group in town, unless I'm missing somebody. I don't know everybody in town, but in the Energy Committee either. But, um, I think this is one that's, this is, this is a big nut.
I mean, we're staff person making some phone calls to a couple of different companies. I mean, I, I discussed that with, um, someone from New Watt Energy. And he said, absolutely, that works fine. I have, you know, I have, he was pitching other things with different investors that work in the same way that power purchase agreements work and, I don't know. I think maybe a staff, that would be something too, maybe for a staff person to decide, you know? Is it a matter of Jeremy making a few phone calls? If those few phone calls show us that there's an opportunity that where it makes sense to hire somebody, then great. But I think it might be easier than, I mean, the Sagamore Farm access road question appears to have, that's, that's a professional-
That's true.
Bring, bring in, I don't know.
That's true. Um, and we haven't gotten there yet.
I'd like to spend money right now to try to answer that question, because we need to know that for any, anything that we do for Sagamore, we need to understand whether there's hope for that road, our road, or not. Or do we have other options for access other than chiplats? Where would, you know?
I do know that when we looked at the solar farm first time, and we examined Sagamore, um, C and P went to look at the road, because-
Right.
We, we originally thought, and it's not technically a road, it's called a road, it's not technically a road.
I know, but that's all tied up in that other political issue.
And they went in and they said it would take a huge amount of money to make that into a real road.
Have, has the town ever done any general land use planning for that site?
Um, they kind of beat around that bush a lot, a lot. Um, I know Gartley and Dorsky had done a plan, preliminary plan, that shows where the solar farms are, where the solar farm is. Um, and I know that Jeff Senders, when he was with Gartley and Dorsky, did do, they kind of modeled some building there. But no one really looked at the permitting end of things. And that's what you need to do.
No, and, and I remember that plan that Gartley and Dorsky did was that the behest of the then existing kind of informal work group on Sagamore Farm.
Yep.
And, you know, that was, that was not-
I agree.
My opinion, land use planning.
Yeah, I agree.
And what I'm talking about is whether or not somebody, tell me, but somebody who's professionally knowledgeable, and this can be done, this can't be done because it's too expensive. I don't think it's ever been-
I don't think that's ever been done.
Water tank there, it's, somebody decided, I mean, somebody drove things in and put the water tank in. I think we should force the water company to either get that tank out of there, or fix the road, or do, that's what, we've got, that whole situation there is all complicated. And part of the reason we've said it wasn't a road for years has to do with the fact that the town didn't want to have to plow it. And basically, we've argued, we'll argue about it forever until we get some, some numbers that everybody can agree.
It seems to me that, well, I agree with you, Allison. I think, I think that this is one, that's one of the, well, two areas that I saw here. They need some, if you can do this right, some professional input. I mean, and to me, by the way, that, those, that land, I call it land use planning, I can't think of a different term. But, but I think it relates to the last bullet on here, which is affordable housing. That falls, that example, if Mark is technically correct, let's say he is, and somebody says, oh, you're going to cost you three million dollars to put a road in there, we're not going to consider putting affordable housing out there, because it's not going to become affordable anymore. I'm exaggerating to make a point, of course. But I think that those, you can't do one without the other. I've never, I've never seen a situation where you can look at seventy acres without doing some, yeah, you, this area is verboten because wetlands, this area is inaccessible, this area has a steep slope to it up to the state park. You're not using that for a heck of a lot, except for maybe wind power. Go ahead, Taylor.
Um, yeah, I mean, just for me, it, it strikes me as impossible to have an informed decision-making process unless we have those answers. Um, so maybe that's the reason why it's been talked about for twenty years, because no one's actually-
Done it.
Done the work to figure out what can and can't do. I mean, we could, the list is good. And I realize this list is not just all Sagamore, which is good. But in terms of like, we seem to be coming back to Sagamore quite a bit.
Often.
We're, that's step one, in my mind. Like, we can't make any decision until we know exactly what we can do with it.
Is it, um, we don't, we can't, we don't have unlimited funds, obviously. Um, we don't want to prove unlimited funds to do all kinds of great things in just this area. But we've, I've already mentioned two areas where, you know, the possibility of investing in solar outside of Camden might involve dollars. Land use planning of some degree, I assume, Jeremy, that involves some kind of dollars to somebody, some entity in, not engineers, land use planners. There's a big difference in, from my experience. Now, Tom, what, what do you think about?
I mean, I, I think in this instance, you, the engineers we need, I mean, the permitting and the surveying and all that, that needs to be done to really give you a good report on how we kind of could develop that site, using the road. I mean, again, there's vernal pools up there, there's a big wetland up there. I mean, you know, land use planners, they'll give you a very broad kind of schematic showing, yeah, this is, this is where residential could work, this is where a road could work, and they could do all that. But I don't think they can, they'll get into the, the real nitty gritty that we need them to. I mean, we want to make a, I think we need to make a decision, a sound decision relatively quickly on this property. And the only way to do that, I think, is to really go down the road and say, can we permit a road here? Can we build one here? Do we have the legal right to build one here? How do we handle the, the wetland permitting that's needed up there?
Site accessibility.
What are the other options for a road?
Right.
Can we use the timber cliff?
Right. I mean, I think that's what we really need. So I think it's going to be some legal work and some engineering and some survey work. I, I think that's, would suffice in this, for this property.
Talking about me perhaps bidding out a site accessibility study?
Do you know how much that would, that would cost?
I'm, I'm going to guess thirty thousand dollars would be my guess.
But you might be right.
Now, what about just calling up some developers and walking the land too, as a preliminary?
And I will-
Developers that have done, you know, cool things other places and say-
Interest?
Or, yeah, just to say, maybe somebody can look at that and say, no way would houses go here. You'd want to do it here. Or maybe they'll say, they're so interested that they'll pay for, I don't, do you always have to start by, it seems like-
Well, I think we need to know-
Micro-managing it, trying to, we try to, we hire bazillion consultants.
Yep.
We hire, we, we get this whole vision, we try to just micromanage it to the point of, like, then it never, like with the Tanner, we know so much about that place, and it doesn't. But, but we don't just say, let's put out a feeler to, you know, the types of entities or, that actually have the resources to do something like this. And then they have sometimes a whole team that, you know?
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I think they, what they're going to need to know is, you know, what are the rights we have to Sagamore, they would have, or we have to Sagamore Farm Road?
We have all the rights to-
How can we build it? And I think they need to know initially what are real, how we're going to access a site. Um, and that- And that's, I think, the struggle in this, because if you bring a developer in, yeah, they've got a team of people, but if they have to actually do a survey and do the legwork on permitting a road, figuring out how to get this road to work, I think that's what we really, we need to do on the front end, is assess the access to the site and what a potential Sagamore Farm could provide for in terms of traffic. I've heard that that is a challenge there, Sagamore Farm, because of.
The slope. They say it's impossible.
And nothing's impossible, I will say, in my opinion. Things are always possible, so.
But I mean, I think that's important also for the, regardless of what's done with the site, because I don't, you know, I don't think we can rely, if, if, you know, all this work is done and we decide to go down expanding the solar farm there.
Right.
I don't think we can rely on Chip Lates' good grace to give us more access. Yeah, I think that, like, the town's independent access to that site needs to be worked out, no matter what.
I just, I'm, I don't, $30,000 to, that's, I don't understand. It feels like that's a larger scope than what.
I think just site, if we kind of narrow it down to just site access, there's.
Site access, I think, is probably the best.
That's much less.
Yeah.
Let's just move forward that quickly.
You feel like, you don't have to do everything in series, you know? You can do things in parallel. What I'm thinking is, you can certainly be talking to people who are in the business about developing land, just, just without costing anything, to provide their feedback. I can think of a couple off the top of my head in Boston and out here, that might be interested in looking at this, this chunk of land and looking at, and not specifically pegging whether or not something's going to go here, but they'll, they'll bring up issues we may not even have considered while we're doing a activity to bid out, to look at just the road accessibility to the site, legal issues, permitting issues and those kind of things. We could do those two in parallel. We don't, and I just, having dealt with developers, land use developers, they look at these things and they're going to raise right away accessibility. Okay, we're solving that. What else? There may be other stuff in the woodpile we don't know about, and I think we shouldn't guess at those. So, and by the way, that those, that activity usually doesn't cost you anything. Well, wood would cost some of your time that costs us.
Yeah.
To put together a little packet to give to these individuals, say, look, we own this land, what do you think?
Yep.
Exaggerating a little bit here, but, you know, that's, I think you do both of those in parallel.
Yeah. And that's what I'm, I'm about ready to start doing that, and I just haven't, you know, the spring has been a little challenging for me, but.
Right, do we have also your time? I mean, how much time do you have and what is?
Yes.
Because when we make a decision to do this, what are we making a decision not to do?
Well, I see my priorities as Tannery and Sagamore Farm, really outside of zoning ordinances and, you know, some of that stuff. So right now, I see Sagamore and Tannery as my priority, personally.
Does that make sense?
Well, we have to be careful because.
I mean, I think it does, but I guess, I mean, so one of the things, if we're, if we're to do all of these things on this list, quite honestly, that is all Jeremy and I would be doing.
Right.
You know, I've got my hands full with the streetlight project, even though that's been voted on, that's not over.
No way, no way.
Right, and I don't see this as something that you guys were supposed to.
No, no, and I don't, I don't think that was anyone's intent, but I think that there's an expectation that, okay, there's an expectation that these issues are going to take top priority and we've got to move forward on all of these at the expense of a lot of other things that we do. And I think that what I, what I need from the Select Board is everyone to be very clear that we have other, there's only a few things that we can do realistically in the time that we have, given all the other things that we're responsible for.
That's what I'm trying to, that's precisely what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I know what you're saying.
I'm asking us to reflect on whether it makes sense for Jeremy's top priorities to be.
I think that this makes sense, you know, what we're talking about.
Too unsolvable, like.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying now. I, I think that, given all of the other.
Stuff.
No, 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 given everything around Sagamore Farm that we've been talking about, that question needs to be answered for us to make any decisions about doing, you know.
Taylor brought up.
Yeah, so I think that that's a good use of his time. But I do think when it comes to all of the other, you know, solar and renewable energy stuff, this is kind of, I would like a, I'd like a strategy and a plan, so instead of every time somebody comes up with an idea like Sagamore Farm or like somewhere else, I can say, that's not part of the plan, or it is part of the plan, and I am like, methodically ticking through the list of things on the plan. And that's just not happening now. I'm getting like, everything thrown at the wall and expecting dead stuff.
And I think you as the policymakers, I think that's where that's important.
And I don't think, oh, we've had a new revelation, these are the priorities, go!
No, no, I think you, that you guys came up with a very clear, actionable item that we need to do something on in terms of Sagamore.
I don't know, I think we should slow.
Not really. I would criticize ourselves soundly for what we've done in terms of ordinance development.
I think she's saying, right this very moment.
Right this moment.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
No, no, I think.
That wasn't widespread phrase for.
You're, you're saying we need to look at the access to Sagamore Farm regardless of, you know, what you do with it, and I think that that's a very clear step one for anything that we do.
That makes sense. I think the thing we have to remember is, is we are, we are not just the Energy Committee, and they're not just the Energy Department. And that's sort of, we tend to super-focus on this, we forget that.
Right.
It's a town to run.
I'm trying to remember what the other things are that I thought it was important to Jeremy.
But I think we've, we've come, you know, just to look at the big picture, in fact, the streetlights are getting done.
Yes.
It's an incredible thing, you know?
Yeah.
We've done, we've, we've done a lot of great things already, and we just, you know, looking forward. But, and kudos to her for picking the streetlights as something that can be done and done quickly and efficiently. And, you know, and so we also need feedback from you with that, what is realistically able to be accomplished?
You know what? Another thing I think is realistic in terms of all of this is the energy audits on the buildings, because that's something that we'd need to get a consultant to do for us. So it really wouldn't, I mean, I'm not saying it's no time on our part, but.
Yeah, I was talking to Jeanie about this.
Yes. Majority of the time that's being spent is going to be spent by a consultant and they're, you know, so it's not Jeremy and I or, you know, another staff person kind of.
No, I agree. I think, I think we have missed the boat on exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, about the general.
LEDs, streetlights, I agree. Number two, we've absolutely missed the boat about energy conservation opportunities, absolutely missed it.
It was, it was four years ago that, as President, we walked this building from basement to attic, to look at all the problems. One of the problems we had here, Brian couldn't even do a pressure test because there's asbestos, possible asbestos in the attic. And that's a problem.
They did a, they did a pressure test in my house and I told them there was asbestos.
I don't get that.
What?
I don't get that.
I'm not the expert, I'm just the messenger here, I don't know.
I don't, that's not, you're right, I agree, Mark. And I, I think you're 150% right, we don't get to do, to do everything and we're, but on the same time, I guess we, you know, myself included, I've been trying to respond to some of the people I've spoken to about the solar farm and understand the need for doing something. So, yeah, I, I hear that, but I just want to make sure, whatever we do, we have something on the table that doesn't continue to put one Sagamore on the back burner. That's policy. Doesn't mean we have to solve it tomorrow, doesn't mean we have to attack it immediately. And at the same time, in parallel, continue to do the, the plethora of homework collectively about what we do about energy. And that doesn't have to all be the town either, but that's what the subject is here. But I agree, I think we've, I think we've lost a lot of planning and economic development time in the last months because of a focus on ordinance development, after we've all discussed it, you know, and we're doing it, and we're, I think we're getting close to getting past that hump.
Yeah, I think so. I do think if we can figure out the access to Sagamore, this remaining acre and a half that's up there that's next to the solar farm is primed for, primed for expansion of a solar farm. If we can figure out access.
Right.
And how to develop the rest of the site. I mean, it's sitting right there. I don't know what kind of development you're going to put right behind Chip's building and next to the solar farm existing, you know? I mean, that's a challenging one in and of itself, but if we can get access there, I think doing expansion right next to it is, makes perfect sense.
Access opens the valve.
It does.
To looking at uses.
Yep.
Of which are many, probably. I don't want to list them here, it's not.
And they all, they all can work together. I know, you know, the.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The recreation, parks and rec committees very, you know, people are very adamant about trails staying there and all that. That's a whole nother thing, but all of this stuff can work together.
This is the kind of thing, this photo, which is, I don't know what people can see, but it's a, you know, this combined, you know, in this case, it's housing or building plus solar. That is where most of the planet has been going with, in terms of that kind of thing. And it's the, because it's the highest, it's the highest return for use of land, that's why. You can accomplish all of those things, but you're right, there's a tripwire with land use in terms of accessibility. If somebody, we're to tell them, and they doubt they will, that it's not accessible, that going to breed a whole different issue. I don't, I don't believe that for a minute, but it's, you know, it's a possibility. But how to prioritize, and we just need to know which of these you think, we think, you think, we can get, pieces of this, we can get into, you know, doing either internally or externally. That, that's hard for me to prioritize. These are all priorities to us, and we have a tendency of prioritizing every ordinance that comes to the table, every initiative that comes to the table. We delegate some of these things to committees and the likes, great, but we've also discussed, you know, using outside professionals where we don't have the staff to do it, because utilization of $10,000 to $15,000 in terms is smarter than trying to, you know, get you or you to focus on, or other staff to focus on, stuff we're just not going to get to. We need to have that feedback too, from you. We've had the feedback about the ordinance thing, but we haven't, you know, I don't know what's available looking forward. Can, can we do, can, you know, it seems to be bidding out the accessibility of the sites, that's a very small chunk of change. And I mean bidding it out. Now, if you don't have time to do the RFP, we can find others to do the RFP, but, you know, that's.
No, I think that's an easy one.
That's what I thought.
Do you think it makes more sense to do that than have Jeremy and I to go out there with the calculator and a tape measure?
I think quality of product will be much better.
Just curious.
With an inclinometer? Yeah, I think that's not a very good use of their time, especially in this weather. But I think that's, that's one that seems to me that's breed, if you feel, we of course want that feedback, but let's not put things on the table, create expectations in the town that we're working on something and we don't have the time to do it. I totally agree with that.
Well, this is, I think it's a priority. I mean, there's so much.
I think it is.
So much time and effort and.
I, I think it is.
Spent on Sagamore, and here we are.
Maybe in parallel with that, we could also spend a little investigation of the legal aspects of that, that could be a bill thing, you know, and that doesn't drain staff either. I think those are, those both kind of go in parallel. What do we have to do to?
He's kind of looking at us like he wants to.
Say hello.
Oh, of course, go ahead. Just know you're on TV.
I'm on TV. If we, do we feel like if we answer the access question now for Sagamore, that that kind of, that moves the ball forward, gets questions answered, although we can make a decision like that makes taking a second step easier if we just get that out of the, like, that's our actionable item today?
Gives us the options of what we actually can do.
Yeah, that's true.
Could potentially further complicate the solar thing, but it's.
It can complicate everything.
There needs to be, right.
Yeah, I'm so sick of talking about that road.
It can become a dead duck if the site were quote-unquote inaccessible, which by the way, just at least it was not the case, but that's, that's, in my opinion, means nothing.
I mean, we just don't have a lot of facts on it.
Century, they use it for a century as the primary access.
Well, remember, remember, there's, there's a whole bunch of fill-up there that came from the Route 1 project some, what, X years ago, when 10 years, 12, 3 years ago? That was dumped up there, those trucks didn't walk up there. So, there's a prohibited, there's, but anyway, just need to get it there. But, sorry.
It came up through chips, but.
They did. There's ways of doing it, but there's a legal issue to that, of course, blah, blah. Have a question.
With requirements and.
Actually hasn't been there for all that long, but.
No, no.
We have with requirements of roads and all that in our, in our zoning ordinance, so, I mean, that we got to look at all of that.
I mean, not as it is. We know that the road doesn't work as it is.
As it is, correct.
As a road. Nobody's making that argument.
Oh, no, 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 not even close.
Yeah, we just need the facts on how we get to the point where it is.
Well, I think that's a priority. That seems to me to be a priority.
That's a huge priority.
Now, these other things on the list, they, like, for example, the discussion about out-of-town Camden, you, you don't have the bandwidth to do that.
That's what I think the Energy Committee, I think some of these are great things for the Energy Committee, to, they're questions that they can answer as part of their evolving study.
I think you need to direct them to do these kinds of things and not.
I'm sure they're watching right now.
Well, I mean, you know, I think the reality is, is some of these committees, I think everyone knows that, and you get a lot of dedicated committed people, and they just take it and they run with it, which is fantastic, because sometimes you get great ideas, but at the same time, like you said at the start, Bob, they're not looking at all of the issues that Select Board members have to deal with and the town has to deal with, so.
Okay, I have a note.
They may find something that they really like, but just doesn't make, it's not feasible for the town to do.
So I've identified the possibility of investing in solar farm outside of Camden as an Energy Committee activity on priority.
And then have them report back to you on that.
Bring this to the next meeting and say, what can you work on?
And also, can we? Oh.
Yeah, we can do that too. I think the, I think that, I think we should also prioritize which one is the most important, Mark, to an extent.
I would, I would just say, I would just give it to them and say, what, you know, because, especially Pete and you have spent a lot of time on doing things, let's just give it to them and say, what makes sense? Instead of telling them what makes sense to us, I'd like to say, what makes sense to you? And what do you know?
They might already know the answers to a lot of.
I know, so let's, let's ask that instead of telling them at this point. We've got the questions we want answered, let's see what they can answer for us.
I was just going to ask them.
Well, I asked them, I asked them, excuse me, one second, I'm sorry, I didn't want to close on this. I did ask them about this solar farm outside of Camden activity, and the answer from both people was, that's time-consuming and really haven't got into that in any heavy, well, whatsoever, so I know that one. But to me, that one is among the list, a priority, because that's, that's huge when you're looking at the possibility of, well, maybe it's not the only one, but it's, it's one of the big ones on the list.
Yeah.
You can ask them.
Revision pitches that to people when they come to your house.
Did you say that again?
Revision pitches that to people when they come to your house to evaluate solar. They try to get you to invest in solar farms outside of the area, and they tell you why it makes sense, so.
I mean, I think it may be as easy as doing a, you know, the town of Camden seeks to partner with, you know, kind of like an RFP, a very simple, and just get it out there, I mean, these, when you put these RFPs out there, they go far and wide to every, you know, entity that may be looking at this, and we may find that-
All the local people.
We may find that there's companies elsewhere that, and towns that are looking at the same thing, and they will respond to us and say, yeah, you know, we're, we're doing a, we're in the process of doing one, jump on in, and I think that's conceivable and very possible.
I was going to ask the question, but-
I'm sorry, can you interrupt?
No, no, it's okay, everyone sort of just answered it, you didn't interrupt me. All of these items on here are great, and they're all related to energy, so my question was going to be, does the Energy Committee have a list prioritized for where they come out on these, and it sounds like the answer is no, but that would be helpful.
Bring it to the next meeting.
Well, yes, good.
Knowing that, the reason I ask that is not, we might feel like half of these, we just don't even want to talk about right now, but they do great work in their research, and I feel like if they, if they identify with a few of these that they feel like are feasible and want to put some legwork into prioritizing, this one makes the most sense for us, and here's why, then we can-
Or just answer the question, I just want written things that explain, this is, this is what we know about this, this is what we know about this, this is what we know about this, so we know where-
Bubbles narrowed down.
Even if it's like, this is not feasible, I just want somebody to write, this is why, or, and maybe even, a lot of them could have a link to something that has already been published, we do not make good use of all of the studies and all of the things that have already been documented, it could be in some Energy Committee minutes packet somewhere that we just-
I agree, I think the, what did balancing act here is to, I agree, I want to hear, my person, I want to hear answers to the eight, eight questions listed here, and not, because, remember, they're supposed to be working to provide us information, it may be a sentence that says, you know, absolutely not because, that's fine, that's okay, but beyond the decision about the land, the site accessibility, kind of an RFP, these eight, well, I actually added one, nine questions, that we can get that information from, the ninth I added, by the way, was the energy conservation opportunity thing, which I think you said there's a report that exists, and that's great, but, you know, we got to do stuff with this, we just can't let it sit, so there was nine items on this list to me.
There are a few others that I forgot to put on there, one is that the Energy Committee, it might, it's probably almost ten years ago now, they did, put a huge amount of work into this wind analysis, and found that Raggin Mountain was like a really awesome place for wind development, and everybody kind of, or some people that lived there had a meltdown, because it was, that was talking about, I think, a really, really big wind farm kind of idea along across the ridge of Raggin Mountain, but they put a lot of work into it, that was the, the Energy Committee's first big thing that they did in terms of, like, what are the great opportunities in Camden, and that's what they settled on, and the Select Board got behind it, and they were raising money for a study, and then this group formed-
To fight it?
To fight it, but I still think that we should look at what they found, and they should, I'd like to know, you know, what are the evolving thoughts on that, the water, you know, then, then several years later, the Watershed School comes and says, you know, two windmills would do, take care of the energy uses for the, the energy needs of the entire town, and we just kind of ignored that part, and I'm imagining that probably the Energy Committee was a little bit worn out on the wind thing at that point, but, you know, one windmill here, you know, you have one at the, there's one at the high school, and it, it's not causing anybody any problems, or maybe we need to talk to them, but if-
I can talk to that, because I was one of those meltdown people.
I thought so.
And basically, what happened is they did a lot of research, and, and, you know, the people did a lot of research about what it would do, and, and one of the things we found out that access and up to the top of Raggin Mountain was very expensive and very difficult, and two, there was a lot of documentation about windmills disturbing residential, they're not silent, they're not, there's all sorts of things going on with them, there, there's, there were a lot of evaluations of places that were close to developed areas where they caused serious problems for the residents, and there was a lot of evidence about that, and at the time, I said, who's behind this, who's doing this, and nobody could answer the question, nobody could answer the question about who wants to support this, and so they finally gave up, it was, it was not so cut and dry that wind makes a lot of sense-
It never is.
Of course not.
There's always upsides and downsides, but, but there's one at the high school.
I understand, but that's not the size that they were talking about for up there.
But so, I guess that's what I'm saying, that here, we, we all have little bits of information, and we don't have what-
Two windmills the size of one at the high school would not even come close, the other thing that happened at the time was-
So, let's get that all written down somewhere, that-
I know, but the other thing that came, came out, the research is that solar was much more efficient per cost than windmills were at the time.
Absolutely, absolutely not.
Yeah, it's not, they're not saying that now.
Anyway, we're not going to debate it here, I agree with you, Mark.
When it's up against rooftop solar, I think, but not ground.
That's correct, that's correct, but I think what we should do is, let's just get the information and the history, so we're all armed with it, make more intelligence-
How's it going at the high school, how is, you know, what are the options for that size of windmill, what?
Three, four, five, six, seven.
Neighbors can't see that one, which I'm sure is helpful.
It's beautiful, you see it with a sunset, and you drive, I mean, people see it, it's-
When you're at the high school.
When you're driving by, you can, I can see it from-
Let me summarize, yeah, yeah, it's true.
That's true.
Let me summarize a couple of where I think we're at, because we wanted to talk about those all day.
And sorry, Jeannie had a great idea, the other thing I wanted to add to that was, Jeannie was saying, why, why don't we ask, or maybe she was talking about maybe getting a bill passed or something, that, to the right of ways that CMP has for all these power lines everywhere, some of them would probably be great candidates for solar panels, because it's already sort of unusable land, and they have to keep the brush down, and especially since CMP now is trying to, not that I want to support their project in the corridor and all of that, but they are in the process of negotiating benefits, and-
Maybe now's the time.
And the grid is right there, by the way.
What's that?
The grid is right there.
Right, where?
Utility grid is right in line with those, that's where the power runs, so the feedback from solar would be in those corridors, back into the grid.
Right, that's, yeah, yeah, it's, right, so, can we ask about that, or can Jeannie, I feel like Jeannie can, I know Jeannie's time is, is kind of like your time a little bit, right, because you use her, it's not like, well, we just won't have Jeremy do this, or Jeannie, but then that, but Jeannie, she also has these beautiful plans of how development in Sagamore could work, she'll pull it right up on her computer, she's got all these different things, that's like, oh, this, you know, this solar panel could go here, and the trails are here, and the, I mean-
I guess we're-
But if we could just ask about that, or maybe the Energy could, Energy Committee could, wind and CMP right of ways.
It seems to the published list here, we've actually added two, two other elements, one would be, maybe the Energy Committee could answer, would be the, the history of the wind development initiative was one, the other one was-
History and future.
Yeah, just for the feedback, the other one we added to this list would be the energy conservation opportunities with respect to buildings in Camden.
Do we want to ask them that?
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking us, I'm just-
Does that fall under the energy audit that we were discussing?
I feel like we know enough there, they've told us, there are some deficiencies, now it's our job to see if we can fund A.
Okay.
Or did you think we should outsource that again back to committee?
No, no, I feel like that's as simple as just like going to Siemens or Honeywell and somebody doing a-
I think we should bid that out possibly, or-
Getting it out and saying we want to do it.
Somebody that looks at historic buildings.
Energy audit of all of our buildings.
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
And this, can we put the CMP corridor thing, I mean, the CMP right of way thing on the list too?
If I'm, Allison, if I'm following you on a CM, so if the CM, if we're looking at a CMP right of way, would that fall under possibility of investing in solar farm outside the town of Camden?
No, that would be like, I mean, maybe-
Maybe CMP corridors and-
Corridors, I shouldn't, I shouldn't-
Right of ways.
Yeah, like, you-
Yeah, I understand.
Go down Ross and Ave and look left, or, yeah, I mean, we have power lines running through, I think, yeah.
I think we can add it to the list, like, because in fact, we have to prioritize a little bit, because I don't want to kill the Energy Committee with-
Oh, right, if this was for the Energy Committee, Jeannie intended it.
Yeah, exactly, I think that would should, we'd not, but I think Energy Committee, we parking lots, the wind question, midcoast solid waste, investing in solar farm out of Camden, the cooperative, purchasing agreement opportunities, rooftop solar, actually, the town school owned buildings that have evaluated for rooftop solar, which buildings we, worth a second look, eh?
We could do that.
I think we could do that one collectively, I think that's a matter of looking at the buildings and getting some more specialized opinions structurally about that one.
Where is that study that you said Gartley did?
Um, I think-
Was it Gartley that did it, assess the building structurally, or was it Carmen?
Carmen.
Okay.
Yeah, she did, but I think-
That I don't know, we just, we just heard.
The bus barn was one of them, and the bus barn, well, as we know now, is going to be a bus barn, in the future potentially, well, whatever it is, my point is, when you, that happens if there is a structural issue, it's relatively easy to fix it in a non-occupied building, very expensive to put a column in here or there, if it's really a problem, so it's, my point is, things have changed a little bit, and also, you think sometimes you got to press on the engineer about, you know, how difficult it really is, because we had, remember, we had the same issue with our stand-in salt barn, and it's still out there and hasn't-
That's the prime, that's where this, that was the original proposal, that was what they found was the best, and then they said it was going to fall down.
Ain't going to fall down.
Well-
Anyway, so we'll take that one, not on the Energy Committee, I think, but, and then, of course, the affordable housing kind of thing, that, that kind of plays with what Sagamore Farm and its future, not really in the bailiwick of energy conservation, Energy Committee, kind of a direct activity at least, so that was not there either, so I think, so I'm beginning to summarize again, I'm saying parking lots, wind development, midcoast solid waste, farm outside of Camden, cooperative purchasing agreements, and of course, the Energy promote rooftop solar opportunities among private owners, I don't know, just to answer the question, if anything had been done, yes, no, doesn't have to be elaborate kind of a discussion.
Because Audra has, I, with the private owners and the, Audra has a whole thing that she's been involved with a little bit with McCad, right?
Yeah, and I think McCad could run that again, so.
Do you want to take that one off then?
Yeah, I mean- I think she, no, I think it's, but, we'd like them to take that on, because it was sort of, you sent something to them before, but it didn't take off, our community didn't really participate, but other communities did, and, you know, why not?
McCad got it going again, I think the reason it was successful, and certainly Bath had great participation, because-
Who's McCad?
The Mid Coast Economic Development District.
Okay, excuse me.
Yeah.
She's the chair of the board, right?
I know.
President, excuse me.
So, are you suggesting the Energy Committee look at this one or not?
Well, I think that if, okay, so I could convince McCad to do another round of this, but, you know, what makes it work, in like a place like Bath, it worked really well, because they had their Energy Committee, they had staff, they had all kinds of people publicizing it and holding information-
Maybe you should explain what it is just briefly to-
Oh, so it's a cooperative purchasing program, so what McCad did was, they went out, they went out and did an RFP, or, sorry, an RFQ, and they picked an installer to work with that gave, you know, a discount to anyone that signed on to the program, so they ended up with Sun Dog Solar, and basically what they did is, McCad went out and they-
I see.
Tried to get as many businesses and residences across the Mid Coast to sign up, and they got a, you know, a pretty sizable discount, it was like a twenty percent discount on top of all the tax credits.
Except for Camden, right?
No, Camden could have gotten it too.
No, that's what I mean, but nobody in Camden did it, that's what I'm telling you.
Nobody in Camden did it.
Really? Yeah, that's, that's a great-
So maybe they, I think they need to have that kind of thing brought to their attention, and especially since you're so-
And they could help, you know, get the word out, because really, that's all, the towns that were the most successful were the ones who were really proactive about getting out there to businesses and residences and-
I mean, we could send information home on people's tax bills, and we have a huge, you know, ability to reach people.
All right, that sounds great, that sounds great.
It's a good, good bang for your buck.
I agree.
Nice, in the town.
Yeah, so the only things in summary that are town related, or as I call it, town versus not Energy Committee, are the energy conservation opportunities, Siemens, are the McCad thing with the promote solar rooftop options kind of thing, thirdly, related to the last two bullets here really are the site accessibility look in parallel, probably with a legal look, I think is, all that's kind of, both of those are outsourced in a sense, but not high dollar items, everything else, the corporate purchase agreements, the solar farm outside of town, midcoast solid waste, wind, wind history, wind development, and parking lots kind of belong as a question, so we'd like to get an answer to the topic from the Energy Committee.
And with midcoast solid waste, I don't, the right way maybe to handle that, if it's, if it's rising to a level where it's like the Camden Select Board is telling its Energy Committee to do something, we should, we should, it was the, the idea of just like, telling Pete to drive by with someone from Revision was like, okay, that's enough, but if it's this level, then we need to be, do thing, you know, the process, so.
Do you think it's a Camden owns?
Well, Camden doesn't own it though, they're just in Camden.
I see, okay, got it, got it.
So, but I think, no, I just think we just need to be polite and just say that, tell, put that in our solid, our report, or-
To midcoast solid waste.
Audra can say that as manager, she decided.
For midcoast solid waste to okay the process, Audra, would you okay the process?
No decisions are being made, just research right now.
Too funny. I will say, CDAC, one of the things you asked CDAC to do is to look at town properties, all of the town land that we have, so that's something we just started doing.
Yep.
So, outside of this eight acres, we may find other lots that we could put small solar arrays on too, so.
I kick myself for saying this, but I just, I have an idea for a place in the Mid Coast that would be perfect, that I think we could get a bunch of other towns to sign on to investing in, I'm not going to say where right now, because I don't, but I just-
I mean, I just seem like, I'm ready.
I just, I feel like there's a place that would be so perfect, and we really could get everybody else on board with it, and we could really do something pretty cool.
So, does that take you and I to go meet with some folks?
Yes, it does, but I feel like it's just too good an opportunity to ignore for now.
Then why doesn't-
I feel like we can do some preliminary-
Audra and I do-
Tell me it's a brownstone site.
What Audra's thinking about.
What Audra's thinking, maybe you start with an outline of what it is?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's your house.
Three, mechanic street with solar, yeah.
Solar roads.
All right, well-
So, why don't, why don't Audra and I work on that, on our, on our own?
The back of the list.
I swore I wasn't going to give-
Right here, remember?
I do, but-
Do you want to redo this list and send it to me so I can take it to the Energy Committee?
Yeah, Mark, it's going to, don't cause confusion, I don't want the Energy Committee spending a lot of time on stuff they've, you know, you know, so, and, but, remember, it's mostly to get information back from the committee and make sure we're focusing on the right places, you know, we started this meeting out of talking about work and what, who needs to what, I think we did a great job of whittling those questions down, and in helping, and then with the feedback from the Energy Committee, we can help prioritize if we need to, where we need to spend the time of a committee that doesn't meet every week, you know, every other week, you know, the, there are committees or commissions, and that's part of the issue we deal with here, if we rely too heavily on some of these groups, we'll be discussing this six years from now again, now to me, that's unacceptable. That's what happens, it's natural in a, in town, city government. Great, unless you have any other comments, we'll, we'll just adjourn our workshop and go on to whatever life brings us for the rest of this snowy, icy day.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, Audra or Jeremy, feel like we missed anything, or haven't given enough direction?
No, I feel like we've got some good direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, and I appreciate that direction, because we can, our energy level goes up a little high sometimes, and we need to be reined back to-
It's important to look at, utilize as many consultants that are out there, or companies that do things like solar, you know, and rather than just sticking with a Revision that has done work for us in the past, I think we should expand our, we talked about it the other day, in terms of consultants that we use, engineers, you know, you got to share the wealth.
Absolutely.
And I think it's important-
Different installers have-
Have different, I plans.
Focuses or ways they do things.
They do, and I think that's hugely important, so.
I have seen too many times when you're using certain consulting entities, my own included in the West Coast, a little myopia goes on sometimes, because, not intentionally, but it just happens because I live there.
Yep.
You know, you got to be careful with that, I think that's part of it, we, just, everything has to be dependent, the other thing I was going to say is to consultants, if you use properly for a few thousand dollars, you can get a lot of information, what is an absolute sin is if you take that information and put it in the file, and that's, that's, to me, is inexcusable, because I turn to the taxpayer and said, yeah, we spent the money, got some good information, it's somewhere in the file over there, why?
Yeah, but, but in ten years, Allison's going to get it online.
Not if it even is online, it's just not in like a proper-
We just don't know where to get it, Mark, that's all, that's all.
But, yeah, someday, you're going to be able to go to this like town library, online library, and you just type in any word, and it comes up, all the different documents that appears in, and you can know everything that's ever been known about.
Name it to Allison McKeller, Internet Town, Camden of Camden, Internet Library?
Sorry.
Well, still have a little more.
I'm in favor.
Got like seven town reports done at this point, so, a little ways to go.
Take ourselves offline now, if we're finished or not.
Should we take ourselves offline?
It's up to you, I don't care, I'm not intending to say anything, I don't want to, to say in public, I haven't said it already.
Maybe the next time, like, get, like, it up or something, oh, I was, I mean, I can do it actually from here.
No, whatever, no, whatever, I just think-
Oh, connection lost.
Very productive meeting, thank you very, very, very much.
Yeah.
I hope we don't kill the Energy Committee, but-
Well, you think your point, Bob, about, you know, particularly in the access question for Sagamore, is not just so we can do a study for the sake of doing it, but so that we can take action- but so that we can take action on...
Correct, on a number of things.
Right.
Yeah, it's a whole bunch of things. It's, it is so common to have, and I'm not criticizing, it's a fact of life. You, you do studies, you do this, and it just winds up sitting on the shelf because of good reasons, but that to me is inexcusable. Why, why did you waste the taxpayer's money if you weren't intending to do something with it? And, or at least come back to, minimum, come back to the town manager or the Select Board and say, hey, we did the study, we honestly think it was a waste of time we're putting on that shelf. I mean, being blunt.
We mostly so often don't know that, to look for something, because we don't know that it was done. You have to be really involved at the town level for a very long time to have knowledge of, like, all these things.
You can only go to John's garage so many times to ask him where something is.
Yes, and I'm not sure that everybody, even at the time, read all the studies that were produced during their tenure, but...
I think it's pretty clear, Mark, you're gonna agree that this is not criticism made past the boards or anybody or anything. It's just, it's very natural, occurs all the time. We just want to remember to try to minimize it as we go forward.
And it would be more of a criticism of us for not looking back before...
Well, I mean, I, I'd agree with the people that I said earlier, who said to me, you know, you've talked about Sagamore Farm for 20, 30 years, what it was done? Well, the answer is nothing.
It's only, it's only belonged to the town since 1946, you know? It's not even 100, it's not even 100 years old yet for us.
It's not even antique yet.
And we really haven't tried that hard, it's just been sort of sitting there. It was a, I mean, it did serve a purpose, it was a gravel pit.
It did.
Yeah, that's what they needed it for, for a while, and it did that, and they made a bunch of holes.
Was that from the 2005 with Route 1, that they brought the material up there? I think it was the High Street rebuild of Route 1, I think.
Yeah, they did.
Now we can reuse it for Route 1 North. Sell it back.
And those holes.
Sell it back. Oh, I'm talking about, remember, they're filling seven feet of Springbrook Hill. That's being brought up seven feet.
I know, they did that before, too. We should just put the bridge back like they had it before.
I would agree, but that's neither, they're, they're...
They filled it with waste material in the 30s, too, I just found it at...
By the way, to ask a question they shouldn't ask, have we heard anything from, uh...
The answer is no.
Yeah, I haven't heard a thing since the...
No, we have to do it.
North?
No, they have, no, what's good news, good news, that road is falling apart. Um, but right, they were doing surveying last week up there. So they're still doing some...
Oh, they are, okay.
Finishing draw and stuff, but we need to, we will need to contact Ernie Martin and find out what is actually going on with that, because they, as a, as a, our landlord on that, on that stretch, they have not contacted me, as they will have to do